Ready to go? Okay. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the special meeting of the Electoral Area Services Committee of Monday, March 7, 2022. First of all, I'll acknowledge that we're meeting on the unceded and traditional territory of the Comox First Nation, keepers of this land. On our agenda today, we have a management report for receipt, moved and seconded. It's quite a long management report. I see Director Greaves got a question.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I thought I start number one and ask for a report on all 25 of them?
Yes.
Twenty-one of them. But I'm just going to pare it back and actually ask if there's an update for the public viewing on the Mount Washington Fire Protection Service and how we're coming along with that. I forgot to have a staff report.
Turn it over to staff.
Yes, good morning, directors. And absolutely, Dr. Marzo, our General Manager of Community Services, can provide that update on Mount Washington Fire Services.
Thank you through the Chairman of Directors. Essentially, the AEP process is beginning here, and we're a little delayed at getting approval from the province. So let's put us back here. But I think more importantly, though, I just want to provide a brief update around timing on what it looks like moving forward. We've had and continue to have challenges, both on the project management and design side, on both sides, from our consultants, as well as our own CVRD side in getting to the final design of the project. Some of it's due to site conditions that have kind of came up and other things. But I think also, a bigger picture, standing back and looking at meeting the idea of a June now construction guideline with, you know, now waiting for the AEP process to be done by, you know, mid-April. And the reality of getting competitive tendering process from any construction company to start in July is becoming a little bit of a, maybe a dream perhaps. So I think I will continue to work to those timelines of getting out a bid for the Mount Washington all. But we'd be extending, proposing to extend those guidelines, timelines for any successful bidder to look at providing us a schedule to have it complete by September 2023. So just an update on that process. It's just the reality of the construction market and the current project management of the design and the abilities of the consultant to meet their own guidelines and timelines.
I think you have a subsequent, Director Gre.
Thanks. A question through the Chair, through CAO. What time did we, what was the date we submitted this to the province? Are they just blissfully unaware of the challenges of building in the Alpine?
Comment on the exact dates, but it was a six to eight week delay, I think, longer than we anticipated. But Jake's here to comment on the dates.
So, okay. So in other words, it, yeah, well, you know, what I always say about the awareness of senior government of the trials and tribulations of local government, which is minimal. Just one more thing. I'm just wondering about the number 10 as well. This is November 8, and I know we had a presentation from the McCauley Road Association. So I'm just wondering, is there anything new to report on working on a egress-to-egress emergency access from McCauley Road at this time?
Beyond what was spoken at the last budget meeting, which we'll just quickly identify is, yes, we have been successful looking at it in terms of reference with the Ministry of Transportation. We're just finalizing the responsibilities and the wording in that terms of reference for clarity around existing road and the safety of that existing road as opposed to just looking at additional egresses and from, you know, additional potential road building or opportunities in the future to connect to different areas. So, yeah, we're well on our way. Again, as we look for that April candidate to again engage the residents out in that area. And we'll be moving forward with Moti and ourselves to have those discussions in the neighborhood.
So once again, the balls in the provincial court?
I would say we're, no, I wouldn't say that in this case. I think we're almost finalized agreement. It's quite back and forth, and we'll be, we'll be ready to move as we plan to meet with that group in April, as we originally indicated back in September or October of last year. Assuming budgets improve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And good to know, I know everything moves at a slow, sort of glacial pace in government. But, you know, when you're in a term for four years and you see things inch ahead, it gets a little frustrating from an Electoral Area Director's point of view. Thank you.
If I could just add, not to belabor the conversation on the Mount Washington Fire Services, the typical timing on an alternative approval process, law authorization bylaw approval, the inspector approval, typical timing is eight weeks from the province. They've been providing this stat, that indication for quite some time now. They've got their own analysis to go through. So we have been informed previously that eight weeks is that timeframe for response.
Okay, thanks, Director Arbor.
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing through that is getting buildings done at an affordable price right now is, and started in securing contractors, is indeed extremely challenging. I'm seeing it in my area with different commercial institutional projects. I think I mentioned before, at the libraries last year, we decided to suspend capital projects for a while because the market is just so hot and it's just so hard to secure contractors. So I wish us luck in terms of finding a contractor that can meet our price target. We know inflation is still going up in the construction sector. So hopefully, it doesn't affect the AEP and our financing strategy between now and then. Thanks.
Thanks. I don't see any more lights on. So on receipt, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. Item number D, public input on the financial plan, the 2022-2026 financial plan. I'll turn it over to staff to see, moved and seconded?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is the regular spot on the agenda where we do provide summary of public input received to date. We've had the same opportunity on every committee and board meeting throughout the financial plan process. And this is one more opportunity for the public to submit any kind of feedback or queries. There are none included on this agenda, and I think we can move that into the budget presentations.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, receipt. Opposed, that's carried. So we'll move on then to the reports. So we have a verbal update from Kevin DeVell on the budget presentations for the proposed financial plan for receipt, moved and seconded, and over to Kevin.
Thank you very much through the Chair to the Directors. Good morning. So, yes, we were in the final stages of our annual financial planning process. So in front of you today are two financial plans that you'll be seeing for the first time, and then three kind of bring back or update reports for your consideration. This will be the last scheduled meeting at this point of presentation to the Electoral Area Services Committee. So I appreciate the Director's time and diligence in reviewing all these reports and turn it back to the Chair so we can get underway with the presentations.
Thank you. All in favor, receipt. Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. So we'll move on then to function 360, the update for the Hornby Island Refuge Disposal Service Function for receipt. Moved and seconded, and over to staff.
Thank you very much, and I'm pleased to introduce Vivian Shaw, our Senior Manager of Comox Stress and Waste Management Services.
Thanks, Vivian.
Thank you so much, James, through the WCO, to the Chair and the Committee. This report before you is the deep dive that Director Arbor had asked for. As he noted, the discrepancy between the budget that was presented at the last ESC meeting on February 28 and the budget that's uploaded onto the HIRA website. So based on that deep dive, we figured out that the budget that was presented was the one that was originally approved by the HIRA membership back in their fall meeting. And just before Christmas, CVRD staff met with the HIRA Committee to better understand some of the drivers that were causing some of the increases that we were seeing compared to 2021, and also to look for opportunities to reduce the grants to lessen the impact to the ratepayers. And we were able to find a couple of adjustments, and that was the budget that was presented on the HIRA website. The revised HIRA budget came back on January 28, just before the deadline, and staff aired, and we carried on with the original budget. And that's the reason for the discrepancy. But however, in light of the recent events, we met again with HIRA to discuss which budget we should be putting forward. And we felt that it was prudent to stick with the original budget to have a little bit of leeway in order to conduct some of the maintenance work that was required based on the risk assessments. And any budgets or any monies that's not spent would go back into the reserve.
Okay, thank you. Do Directors have any questions? Director Arbor.
Oh, yeah, thanks for having a look at that. Again, that's in four years of budget, that's going up 100% in the requisition. So definitely noted. And I guess when you did the exercise in December to try to identify savings from what was initially submitted, you know, that was not chump change. It was $60,000, I think, that was identified. And now we're going to bring that $60,000 back into it. So I appreciate that if there are surpluses, they can go back into the service. But I guess in the great picture, thinking about it, it's now costing about $250 bucks per home for the service, for the average home. there's definitely a lot of value to the community around the service. But I'm just really hoping that we're starting to cap out in terms of cost increases to this particular service. Because four years ago, the financial plan was calling by now for a requisition of about $2,000 or $220, and we're now sitting at $400,000. So, yeah, that's my hope for the next term anyways, that we can keep this sailing. And if we don't have to spend the full 60, let's try to realize that saving for the future here. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay. So I'm just assuming from staff, we're not changing the budget, so we're not doing any kind of adjustment. This is just for receipt then? Right, okay. So on favor, receipt. Opposed, okay, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, functions 154 and 155, feasibility studies for homelessness and support services for Denman and Hornby. Moved and seconded, and over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Alana Malali, our General Manager of Planning and Development Services, is here to introduce the staff report.
Great, thanks, welcome, Alana.
Great, thanks very much, Chair Hamer, through the Chair, to the Directors. At your February 7 meeting, Electoral Area Services Committee meeting, you directed that we come back to you with a budget for pursuing a feasibility study on Denman and Hornby Islands to look into feasibility of a homelessness and supports type service for the islands. So as you know, we have function 451, which is our homelessness and support service, but that does not include either Denman or Hornby Island. And so the intent of this work is to do that cursory review, sort of an environmental scan to assess the need and the interest of the islands in establishing this kind of service. So we're proposing a budget allocation of $10,000 divided equally between the two islands feasibility, function 154 and 155, in order to retain consulting assistance to help us do this work. There is an impact on the tax requisition, which is that an increase will result, and the amount of that increase will be $1,949 for Denman and $1,047 for Hornby. We are able to use some unallocated funds or dollars from those funds to support the work. The tax impact for a home assessed at $600,000 would be $4.70, pardon me, $4.77 for Denby, Denby, Denman residents, and $5.70 for Hornby residents. We will include consultation with the Islands Trust in this work, and we'll report back to you with the findings of the study by fall of this year. Thank you.
Thanks. And Director Arbor.
Thanks, Alana. It's, that was good to Denby because, you know, I'm excited to actually bring our planning department on Hornby and Denman because it's not typically, it's outside of our OCP bylaws, RGS, and the rest of it. So, and I'm not saying that's why you did that slip, but it made me laugh because it's like Hornby and Denman is usually not a core concern of our planning department. So, yeah, super excited about this project, and I think the community is as well. And it was great that in your report, you already started to identify, you know, some of the prior research that's been done by the Islands Trust around the housing needs assessment. I'll just offer a couple of comments. One is just on the context for my fellow directors, and the other is just on the process. So on the context, you know, the islands are definitely far away from where we tend to build affordable housing these days. We try to condense that in municipalities where you already have services. But at the same time, due to their remote nature and their popular nature, you end up with a lot of displaced families and displaced people. And the working class is slowly almost being pushed out from the islands as are people who are, you know, below the low income threshold. And we have many of those people on the islands. We stand out in statistics when you look at it across the Comox Valley. So that's the context. And what the Islands Trust identified, we are, there are three projects, build projects that are underway. You're familiar with the Hornby one for 26 units. There's two on Denman that are looking at their earlier stage. But the era of projects is going to be increasingly difficult to answer the needs. And the needs assessment shows about the need for 100 secured homes, you know, for the long term. And the Islands Trust say, oh, well, that's two or three a year. And I was glad to see that in the staff report around, you know, is there a way that a housing service that is set up for the long term with a strategy could slowly chip away at it? Or is there magic bullets that exist out there? Those are all the questions that can be explored with the Islands Trust and the stakeholders on the island. And the one thing that I definitely hear in the community is they don't want a passive service. They don't want us to establish something that just pays for reports. People want to see actual homes being made available if there was going to be a service. They want to see action and moving the dial. So in terms of process, I guess, if this proceeds, you know, we would, I initially hoped that we could put something on a ballot. Maybe that won't be possible depending on the short timeline. But I guess I'll leave that with staff to try to lay out the timeline once we get the project underway. But I can guarantee this will be, this will generate interest on the islands. Either way, I think in 2014, the islands were excluded from the housing function. And so they'll look forward to it. Maybe not the homelessness service, I might change the name. I think on the islands, because we won't have those kind of support services and housing thing, it's likely to be mostly some form of subsidized rental or things like that, that I would imagine. But anyways, I'm not trying to predetermine what's going to happen. All I can say is I'm really happy that we're going to proceed with that and try to find some solutions with the Islands Trust for the islands. Thanks.
Thanks, if I can just comment quickly, the, your comment on getting a question onto the referendum ballot. This is, it's an extremely important topic, and it's really important that we understand what the range of possibilities are and understand what the range of interest from the community is. And at this stage, staff doesn't feel that there's time to allow for that kind of a conversation in advance of a ballot. And the risk, of course, is if you go to a ballot too quickly or a referendum too quickly, that conversation won't be had, and we won't truly understand what the public preference might be as we head into a referendum question. I think the intent of the feasibility work would be to take a pulse of the community groups and to try to understand from the community what some of the interests are, taking a look at our own experiences, the pitfalls that we've experienced, as well as the opportunities that are out there. And then, of course, looking at other jurisdictions to understand what the range of activities might be in other jurisdictions and being able to do that feasibility work so that it's available for you as elected officials moving forward. And it is material, it's in the community. But I would want to stop short of saying that that's available for a referendum, recognizing the timeframes and the existing workload that is out there for the CVRD.
Thanks for that. Director Arbor.
Thanks. I guess I had to leave it a little bit late in the term to try to hit that target. Not that we didn't try, but so in terms of spilling into the next term then, can you remind us of the options for service creation? Like, can you? Is this a type of service that can be established through?
Director?
Yeah, a Director's signage or anything like that? Or is it something that requires an AEP or referendum? And I realize, the other part I would say, though, is, just to feedback on your comments, is that we're only allocating $10,000 to that. So I don't think that the level, I think that we're going to run through that money pretty quick. And, you know, if you hire a consultant, that's two or three months of work or something like that, right? If they were going to do it full time. But I'm just, I also don't want to raise expectation that we're going to spend a year studying that, right? So I think the timing is close in the sense that if we don't hit the October time period, I think pretty shortly after, we would have a proposal or not for ratepayers, or otherwise, we would need more money to study it more. So I'm trying to see if in your comments, you're thinking that that $10,000 only might get us to a sketch, and then you would want to do further studies, study and analysis before going to the ratepayers? Or do you believe that with this project, we will have enough meat on the bone to say to the ratepayers, you know, here's a proposal or not?
I don't want to presuppose the outcome of this study work. I think that there would be enough there to provide a pretty good sense of what a service, and to your point, a service that may have some tangible outcome, could deliver. I think that there could be that kind of definition in this kind of study work. We're also looking, and I say this, recognizing the unique nature of Hornby and Denman Island. But we are looking to coordinate this activity with some other contracted work around affordable housing and homelessness and tying some of these pieces together so that there is, there's some synergy that we might be able to find.
Director.
Cool. Okay, I didn't realize that. So that's good news. And for Alana and her team's purposes, another point of intersection that just happened last week is Hornby Island just got MRDT. So the finance authority just approved it for Hornby. And as part of that, 1% of the 3% is going to go to workforce housing. So we now have some monies that can be looked at as well in synergy in relation to that particular service. So that would be a connection probably with IC for us to make in regards to how the different pieces of the puzzle could fit. But good to hear about the other piece of work, which I guess probably joins to our regional thing, which probably hasn't been presented to the board yet because I think I would probably know about it otherwise. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Jake, did you want to provide any context around the service establishment piece and the range of methods?
Sure, thanks, James, and through the Chair. Yeah, just in regards to the establishment process, affordable housing is not one of the service types listed that is essentially eligible to not set a maximum requisition and therefore also not or proceed through a director consent process. So it would be required to go through some formal letter approval. But again, there are options as far as a referendum or an AEP in that regard, depending on what the requisition is. So at a high level, just to respond to that question of whether director consent is permitted, no, that would not be the case.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other lights on. So on receipt then, all in favor? Opposed, and that's unanimous. You have a recommendation? Moved and seconded that the proposed financial plan for the Denman Island feasibility study service function 154 be approved for a $5,000 allocation as well as for 155, a $5,000 allocation from Hornby Island, and that the staff report back to the Electoral Area Services Committee with the findings of the feasibility study by fall of 2022. Any comments on that recommendation? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Thanks. Item number four, the revised 2022-2026 financial plan for the Putlidge North Community Facilities Support Function 676 for receipt. Moved and seconded, and over to staff.
Thank you. And Dr. Marzo, our General Manager of Community Services, is here to present the staff report.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you through the Chairman of Directors. This is follow-up to our proposed budget meeting. Basically, we were asked to consider function 676, the Putlidge North Community Facility Support, to reach out to those community halls to ensure their suggested operating grants and their original financial plans are still in line with what they foresee in the future. And there's some available opportunity to increase those grants if necessary. As such, we reached out to all four halls listed in the Black Creek Hall, the Black Creek Helby Hall, also known as the Old Age Pensioners Hall, the Dove Creek Hall, and the Merville Hall. We heard directly back and conversed with three of them. And the Dove Creek Hall, after our reach out, submitted a reconfirmation of their $5,000 budget, but they were difficult to actually sit down and discuss it in detail with them. And as such, for the Helby Hall, they were looking for an additional $250 increase. And the Merville Hall was looking for an additional $3,000 increase. So we revised those recommended budgets at budget time, and we'll bring those forth. If there's any questions available now.
Director Gre.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through the Chair, through the acting CAO, to staff. So just to be clear, we don't have an actual budget here for this function. So this is the beginning of the tax requisition under the new format this year? So we're operating off our restart grant?
No. We're operating off of a tax allocation into the 676 budget, which was presented at the recommended budget. So this is just an updated table for 676 that stands alone. So.
So the money's not coming in till this year, correct?
This is the first year of the service, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not dependent on any of that restart money? That's going to go in reserves? Because we don't have a budget on this. It's just, there's no actual budget to look at, right? So that's what's happening to the $80,000. It's going to be put in reserves for, you know, future applications for basically capital upgrades and things over and above the operations budget that we're forwarding right now.
That's correct. There's $200,000 in the restarts, which will be between the two distinct services, or the new ones created, being Bane Sound, and this one. So about $80,000 each. And then Denman and Hornby will also receive a portion for their reserves.
Okay.
And then this is a continuing operating grant that we're discussing at this stage.
And this is at $0.25 on the thousand. Okay, well, so this is the beginning of the new era. And we've reassessed operation budget because obviously, we know that utilities and insurance are going through the roof right now. So this is a little more in line with our original intent, which is to keep it on life support. So we're just offering, you know, the basic to help cover utilities and insurance, the hydro, the gas, if you've got gas or whatever, on the halls, right?
Well, for some halls, it may. Uh, well, for some halls, it may be the basic minimum, and others it provides more operational support for programming and additional. Uh, expenses beyond just insurance and the utilities, so it also provides, for Merrell, for example, they've adjusted a portion. As well for some grant application writing in the future, so each hall's a little different, but yeah, the very minimum, it's definitely. Provides a similar portion to the former grant and aid program that used to provide to these.
And of course, I understand your difficulty in getting them to come to the table, because as you probably know with COVID. Many of these societies haven't even had A G Ms this year, so, you know, and of course, we do see a drop off in volunteerism right across the board. Um, that's uh, pretty well what I expected, but you know, I think that um. To put things in perspective, you know, we spent seven million dollars on recreation facilities in the city of Courtney. And we're asking for pennies for the community halls, so I think it's too important to let slip through. I think uh, one of the ways we could help with some of the organizations is to support with staff time. Because we, you know, we don't have anybody they can turn to if they don't have somebody in, in their, in their organization. And it's a challenge with the aging population and the aging uh, volunteer boards and whatever. So, you know, maybe you did sort of allude to the fact that you're gonna help them in some grant writing. Are we just gonna give them money to get to hire somebody to help them in grant writing?
As noted, it's early in the conversations and the new startup of, of this uh, for many of the services. So we've been meeting with them throughout COVID, those that have been interested through community collaboration groups. And grant writing has come up on a number of occasions. Um, from the C V R D staff, staff perspective, we're more than available to help them with questions and stuff they may have. And in some cases, some halls have put aside a little bit of money to also help potentially a grant writing. To help offset some of the costs of their volunteers or someone to be helped hired. So again, it's a little different model for everyone. But generally, it's important that, you know, they're aware that there are other grants out there. And you know, every hall's at a different stage, and some aren't necessarily going after grants, but those that are, will be able to help them with it.
Well, I know one of the halls um, didn't even come to the table till the eleventh hour. And I, I found out later, making some inquiries into their board that they, they really haven't had a board meeting. They really are just floundering around in, in the uh, so-called almost post-COVID era, so. Well, I guess we're gonna have to go for it, because it's, it's uh, this or nothing. So I will be supporting, but I, I do think that in future, we have to somehow include these halls, because they're so integral. In life in the community, not everybody can jump in the car and drive to the sports center, thank you.
Just gonna ask uh, James to uh, comment, and then we'll go to Dr. Robert.
Just, just thank, thanks Director Greif for those comments, and I think um, as Doug said, this is uh, this is that transition from um, grant and aid funding. That we'd seen in the past to a more stable and uh, and secure relationship between the C V R D and these community halls. And as we develop that relationship and, and support those, those organizations, we'll see better, better connection. And um, and better support for the, for the variety of services that the um, community halls are looking for. So it, it will be an evolution as we, as we go through time.
Thank you, Director Harper.
Yeah, as, as discussed at prior meetings, I think the big opportunity in the next couple of years. Will be to offer and assist those halls, because I, they're all old halls. Don't think we have any new halls. But the, the, well, not, well, people actually in my area, a lot of families are using the halls, we've got yoga, there's a lot of programs. Even the, the program that we've been supporting with building uh, community connections, is, is using some of the halls for. Early childhood, and so actually, I, I think the diversity of people using those is quite high in my area. But, but I was gonna say is um, asset management, right? I think a lot of them are, are, some of them more advanced, some of them less advanced. But to do that roadmap for the long term, when Director Greif was saying, is there stuff capacity that we can put on it in the next couple of years? They're all dealing with the same issue, all, all eight or ten halls. And there's probably the same methodology that can be applied to all of them to really understand their financial needs. And the message I've been giving to Union Bay and Fanny Bay in particular is. You know, if we complete that work, if they complete that work with us or whatever. Then it becomes a, a lot easier for us to consider supports for a capital plan for replacement. Whereas right now is very reactionary, oh, this broke. Does the C V R D or does this funder has ten grand or fifty grand? But I think if we can help them, I'm not putting that motion forward, but maybe next term, next year. If we can ensure that they all have, and again, it can be templated, right? An asset management plan for each of the halls, and we can support that through the capacity we've built at the regional district internally, that would be fantastic. Thanks.
Does staff want to comment on their ability to do asset management, and if so, in, in what term, like, would it be at all in twenty twenty two?
I'm gonna look to Kevin or Doug, I know we have agree, agreements with the community halls. And uh, Doug, can you speak to whether those agreements include specifics around asset management?
With the new, with the Denman or B H Ls, we definitely look at asset management and encourage them to submit capital plans. As we, as we will be with these other halls on the main island, on, on areas A and B and C. I think as far as really completing a, a proper asset management plan. Uh, I'm not aware of any of the halls that have, you know, a detailed plan to those higher standards. Nor uh, is it on our work plan for twenty twenty two uh, to implement a plan. But what is on our work plan is to consider as we come out of COVID here with the halls and as their boards kind of get back together. Is what does that look like moving forward into twenty twenty three? And I think perhaps in the twenty twenty three budget, we, we might be putting forth a recommendation to. Uh, help address asset management or some other shortfalls that some of the, the halls may be challenged with. But you know, those conversations still haven't happened, and I wouldn't want to presuppose them out the halls want to uh, have the C V R D involved in their. One asset management, but uh, there'll be conversations we'll be having with them over this year for sure.
Thanks, Director Robert.
That's, thanks for that insight, Doug, and um, I guess I'm not trying to get ahead of those conversations, but I guess I am. And, and in a sense, I remember when I used to have um, contract with the federal government with nonprofit. You know, sometimes there's a place for government to put requirements in. So you could say, you know, we are interested in, in contributing to capital in the future. But see, if you don't have an asset management plan by twenty twenty five. Maybe you would not be able to access capital money, and if you do. Then you can, you know, there's, there's ways to entice, uh, even though they're all volunteer boards and the rest of it. But as a director, what you, what, what is on my mind is definitely the age of the buildings. And realizing there's a lot of needs coming and, and, and not liking to just have to respond to crisis. From crisis to crisis, um, I don't think it's, it's good for us or the community. When there's actually an opportunity to, to do it in a way that is very um, is anticipative a word?
I can understand it, I understand it.
Yeah, just invented a word, you know, but uh, but it, we should be able to, to help those, those halls create roadmaps. A bit like, as you said, with Hornby and Denman, and, and for some of them, when they do it, the uh, same with the Hornby one. Is you start um, computing um, end of life as well. And, and what does that mean for the community, um, so those are. Those are, are really good things to explore, so communities can plan better for the future as well, thanks.
Some great comments, and you know, I'll just add a couple of items. You know, Direct Degrees pointed out that many of the boards are volunteer-run and are struggling to, to find volunteers. Um, and I'm wondering, Doug, if you could um, comment if this could be a possible use of some of the, the dollars. Is to have um, support staff on the financial end, um, to support with finance, with accounting and bookkeeping. Is that, are those types of dollars something that um, that this function could be used for? And I'm, I'm considering like, all of the halls, you know, pitch in to um, have one, you know, uh, financial person. Support all of them, so that they're not having to each hire a separate bookkeeper. But is that some, this kind of uh, uh, operating grant that could be used?
Yeah, from a strategic planning process, those conversations can be had. I think that it's really largely, the operating grant doesn't have a lot of conditions on it. So there's a multitude of options from strategic planning to asset management to bookkeeping to, you know, I know the groups even talked about. You know, they share insurance providers amongst each other, but some of them have talked about the opportunity for involved insurance rate too. I don't know if they got very far with that, because sheriffs tended to want to keep it building specific. But you know, there is definitely with the creation of the collaboration group through COVID. They're learning a lot off of each other, and uh, our staff is supporting them, and we're all learning a lot together. And I think you'll see this service build in the direction that you're envisioning now. I think it's just gonna take time to get people back together, take time, you know, the main focus is just getting the halls open and start serving the community again tomorrow. And to start piling on a whole bunch of other stuff, as they're just coming back to the table, I think. Might be within their uh, challenges, but also we want to take our time and make sure we don't scare our core volunteers away at the same time, for lack of a better word.
Well said, okay, Director Greif.
Thanks, ma'am, sure, um, yeah, I, I take heart in uh, what Mr. Marzo's been saying. I think that just opening the lines of communication and getting people aware that they're not all in their own individual little lifeboats. Uh, you know, they can learn from each other, work together. I know that Black Creek Hall have a, a part-time, full-time, full-time, part-time person. That, that is why, the reason why they're so successful in their grant, grant writing. So I mean, as, as we keep the communication and keep people um, coming together. Uh, with uh, some of these initiatives around a possible um, capital projects and, and asset management. Things that are kind of foreign to some of the volunteers, so I'm, I'm heartened in that fact. You know, once again, though, uh, when you look at, say, Merrell Hall, nine thousand dollars is what they got in two oh nine. So they obviously need a little more money, that basically just covers uh, utilities um, like Dove Creek, like Halby Hall. It just gives them a hand, hand up, but not a handout, thank you.
Thank you. On receipt then, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, and we have a recommendation moved and seconded. That the financial plan um, be amended to include the two fifty for Halby Hall and three thousand for Merrell Hall. Any comments? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Item number five, the financial plan for the Union Bay Water Local Service Area Function three zero eight for receipt. Moved and seconded and over to staff.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to introduce Chris LaRose, our senior manager of water and wastewater services. Uh, to present this report and the following report on Royston, Chris.
Thanks, welcome, Chris.
Thank you, James, and through the chair, good morning, everyone. I prepared a brief presentation to uh, help guide us through the, the recommended plan for. The recommended financial plan for the Union Bay Water Local Service Area. As I usually do, I'll just start with a brief overview of the, of the service area. So the Union Bay um, system draws water from the Langley Lake watershed. Supplies water to about six hundred and eighty, just under seven hundred properties in, in C D R D Electoral Area A. And the revenue for the services derived from a combination of parcel tax and, and user rates. Uh, there's a, it's, you know, six hundred and eighty properties doesn't tell the full story for this service. There's a lot of growth anticipated, uh, so that's a definitely an, an additional challenge when considering water supplies. We have initiated a, a water master plan for the service that, that should be done early this year, that'll help provide some clarity. Yeah, so as, as we all know, the, the service area came into being in the middle of la- last year, July first, twenty twenty one. Um, so this will be our first full year of operation of the service. Um, in twenty one, we got started with uh, integration of the operations into our broader water services. Um, we initiated the water master planning process I just mentioned. And we got started with construction of a washroom and lunchroom facility at the water treatment plant. Um, that was constructed without either of those facilities. Looking ahead to the coming year, uh, we will hopefully get that washroom facility completed right away. Shortly, within a month or so, um, we've got a, kind of a, an important or kind of time-critical uh, replacement of a main. On, on Third Street, that, that's in the recommended plan. Um, we plan to update uh, the water bylaws for consistency with the other service areas. And that should be occurring in the first half of the year. Um, complete that integration of, of Union Bay operators into our existing system. So actually, just last week, the operators um, started reporting into our, the new Comox Valley Water Treatment Plant. Instead of uh, showing up at the, at the Union Bay one, so that's kind of step one in, in, in fully integrating them into our operations. Um, we'll complete that water master plan and then subsequently initiate a development cost charge study. To make sure that uh, development is paying, paying a, a fair share of uh, of uh, upcoming costs. Um, also on the radar is uh, is an implementation plan for the second phase of, of water treatment. Um, so that, that plant was built, you know, effectively at that capacity. Um, it was a significant development anticipated, that, that, that's likely that one will be bringing for soon as and later. Um, so that is a key output of the water master planning processes determining um, just exactly how much capacity. There really is left in that first phase of treatment. Um, and finally, we want to take the first step towards asset management for the service by developing a um, a detailed asset management inventory. Or an asset inventory. So just got the budget summary table here, just wanted to highlight some of the key, key numbers. So first of all, revenue, revenue's up. Uh, we're, we're projecting or recommending a, an increase of thirteen point four percent year over year. And then two percent per year, uh, for each year of the, the remaining years of the plan, just in consistent with our other water service areas. And to keep up with the effects of inflation. Um, personnel costs are up by just over, just under twelve percent. And this is largely attributed to um. Um, the uh, level three treatment operator that was initially hired to manage the new treatment plant. Uh, went away on maternity leave. Um, and at that time, the Union Bay Improvement District um, kind of removed that position from the, the books. You know, that individual is returning from maternity leave early this year, next month. Um, and so those costs now are showing up as a, as an increase. Um, operating costs are up six point five percent. And that uh, is still some, some funds uh, carried forward for this year to complete the water master planning process. And then, and then an increase in water treatment plant power costs to better reflect the actual costs that we're seeing. So that's just kind of part of growing into that facility. Um, from a reserves perspective, um. Oops, sorry. Um, we have an aver- average reserve contribution of uh, one hundred and five thousand per year over the five-year plan. And as of the end of last year, the capital works reserve was estimated at six hundred and twenty thousand. For capital for this coming year, we've got three projects on the books. The first is that uh, water main replacement I mentioned on First Street. So the cost, the speed of value of that work has gone up to a hundred and twenty thousand. Let's just tell, we've, we've now completed our, our um. Uh, a good portion of the design and the, the costs are, have come up from what was previously, previously estimated. That should carry us through to the end. Uh, the second one is the completion of the washroom and lunchroom at the treatment plant. So it's budgeted a hundred K, and that should be done this spring. And then finally, honoring our commitment to um. Um, Union Bay Estates to decommission the old treatment site. Now that we've, that the, the new treatment plant is fully up and running and commissioned, that site can be cleaned up. And so there's budget allocated through that in the recommended plan. And so finally, just to summarize. Um, in the context of our corporate strategic priorities from a fiscal responsibility perspective, we have our water master planning process underway. So we can um, be, be a better. Um in be in a better position to to respond to um to developers who are are eager in that area. We have a comprehensive rate review plan for this service in twenty three. And we've included a rate increase for this year to ensure that the service doesn't go into a deficit. Um from our climate crisis and environmental perspective, the service is fully metered. In line with our other water local service areas and conservation rate structures in place. Uh community partnerships, the service is governed through the collaboration of electoral areas through this committee and. And finally, from an indigenous relations perspective, um we are committed to keeping the chief and council up to date on all. Um projects of significance for the service. That's all I have today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Thank you for the report, Chris. So the the. I guess I'll start at that side, then maybe we'll go back to slide five. Comprehensive rate review plan for twenty twenty three. I've heard from a few people that they find that five different rates is a lot. Is that something that we will look at? And second, is that something that is typical across our different water systems? That there's that many.
It tiers, is it like five different tiers? Yeah, so that that would be an example of a change, you know, so I mentioned updating the the bylaws to. To be consistent with the other water service areas, so our standard is three tiers. So I think we would be moving to that in in that direction.
Okay, that that that's a great thing to signal to the community, because I've I've definitely heard from people that that's that's confusing. There's still a bit. I mean, it it's a lot of Facebook comments and that stuff around the time when people get their bills and. Yeah, I think some people get lost in terms of tiers and find it a little bit overkill. And I I I think hopefully uh people are getting their answers. Uh I refer to call our finance department in regards to bill and stuff like that. So hopefully, people are getting their answers to their other questions. Can go back to slide five, I guess um. You know, it's still an eleven percent jump, so you you actually did a really great job of explaining each item, but I just want to review. Quickly, so personal cost um of forty thousand. Um I mean, the person, uh the there was an employee on maternity, but how? What did we do during the time of that maternity? Like, did we, how did we service the the treatment plan? That I would expect that it would be cost neutral if we backfill from somewhere else during the absence, so maybe. Because that's a higher amount. I'm just trying to figure out how how we manage that and why it is that. Um it's going to increase by forty thousand.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So they, I guess the short answer is that position was not backfilled. Uh so there, with the exception of um of of a slight increase in one of the other three operators hours to. To 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 partially offset that that lack. So so then, you know, so how did we manage then without that position? You know, I think they were, there's no doubt that uh they were in a bit of a crisis mode when we, you know. Uh the date of conversion, and and I think that was just from, you know, from a staffing perspective, they were felt, they felt very, very stretched then. Um I think that was largely attributed to to that that loss of that position. Um so certainly, they were very ready, you know, for the conversion date and have some additional depth, you know, from from the C D R D. So they, you know, they were in a vulnerable position. Um you know, if there are any other absences that that occurred, they put them automatically into a. Into a shorthanded uh the situation. Um so yeah, so so short answer, as far as the costs go, there was no real backfilling. And we're bringing that position back in, you know, which was, you know, as as we have to, um there's there's no, there's no, there's no alternatives there.
So what L routine is, we just. Moved through a bit of a crisis on the staffing side, and now we're just gonna go to what is a more regular operating model for.
Yeah.
Staffing. Um on the operating side, those would be costs, is it just some of it inflation or or um?
So so the the two that I pointed out there, and maybe just one more point on the personnel cost, so.
Yeah.
Um you know, I think over the coming years, we will look to optimize the the um. The level of resourcing that's that's built to this service as well as 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 other others. So I think this year, you know, this this is set potentially even the the following year, but there, we will be looking for opportunities to, you know. To to take advantage of the economies of scale. I think, you know, that that crisis point that we we touched at last year. Was it was more of a crisis prior to conversion, because they didn't have anybody to call on with the additional depth of the, you know, the rest of the operations team. It could be that, you know, in future years, we meet some of our 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 growth needs in other services by reallocating. So there is an opportunity there. For operating. Um so what I what I touched on there was the the carry forward for the water master plan, so that's that's.
Well, that's.
Inflated the the operational cost a little bit. Um and then the increase in water treatment power costs. So when when you when you roll out a new facility, as we're finding with the with the big new one. You know, you make estimates on what the what the cost, the line ends are going to be, and then you're not until you've you've actually had a chance to operate the facility, do you have a? Chance to to adjust those. So the what the power cost had been underestimated, under projected. Uh so we're we're correcting that. This, that's 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 the bulk of that that increase.
Thanks, and and one last, uh which is on the capital side. Um so we're jumping the reserves a little bit, well, a little bit, quite a bit, by twenty thousand um. I guess we were hoping to get the water master plan done by January, so kind of operating blind as to why, you know, we're we're. Sorry. It would have been ideal to have the water master plan, so we can have the longer-term picture and the five-year financial plan and the rest of it. To understand whether this is the first of many jumps, or this is one jump adjustment that will carry us well into the future. I would have loved to have the answer to that question today, probably don't have it, uh but. Um my question is more, that's fine, uh so, and you highlighted some of the capital projects we did, but. I thought that for the reserves and the capital sides. That that would not be built into the rates, but would be built into the parcel tax, because my understanding is that parcel tax is assigned to capital projects. Um and I see that the budget, the revenue for parcel tax remains the same, so that jump of eighteen thousand will be. On the. Rate. Fees, user fees. So how does that work? Why is it that? That jump in contribution to reserve does not come from an increase in parcel tax and instead is assigned to user fees?
So I think the, you know, our. So I think you you maybe you're you're touching a little bit on the past practice at Union Bay in terms of using the parcel tax for that purpose. In our other service areas, that's not not necessarily how how that that parcel taxes is used. For the sake of this interim increase, or we we opted to focus on the user rates. Rather than the parcel tax, when we do the comprehensive rate review, it'll be looking at a combination of the parcel tax. And the user fees, and we'll be looking, you know, we'll we'll be assessing options and then, you know, reckon, providing a recommendation that kind of. Does it come like a holistic increase in those? Those those rates, so but for now, or yes, we did opt to just focus on the on the user fees, given that it's an interim increase. You know, and looking, you know, we we don't have the benefit of the completed water master plan or the asset management work, and that's why. You know, and you're, as you'll see when I when I present on on the Royston Water Local Service Area and our and our other ones, we we're focused on getting that comprehensive rate review done this year. But we we need that asset manager piece advanced to at least a certain level before we we do that for the service, which is why we're looking to twenty twenty three. I think, you know, just so far, you know, we're great, six or seven, eight, seven or eight months in. I mean, the reserve balance is 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 definitely not not super strong for this service, I think, just as an observation and. And these these types of contributions are still on the on the lower end, so no, no quantified response to that question, but I I think. The the rate review is likely to, you know, the the combination of the asset management, the rate review is likely to conclude that further increases are required in the future.
I see, um Kevin has his hand up. Did you want to comment as well?
Uh yes, please, through the chair to the directors, in particular, any director, I can provide some additional con uh. Information on that as well. So if you look at where the parcel tax is kind of currently situated, which we've budgeted at that two seventy six nine. What that is covering is not only the contribution to the capital reserve at this time, but also covering off the debt associated with the water treatment plant. So given that that's kind of a a a new entity or a a a new cost associated with the Union Bay service. It's not unusual for parcel taxes to also be used to kind of offset the uh financing costs associated with a major piece of 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 capital asset. And so right now, that parcel tax covers off about ninety, close to ninety-nine percent of of the cost between the. Uh debt servicing for the water treatment plant and the reserve contributions, but obviously, as Chris alluded to. We will be doing kind of a holistic review of both the parcel taxes. And the water tools going forward, just to make sure, especially once the water master plan is completed, to make sure we're putting forth a a. Sustainable financial plan going forward.
Great, thank you. Um all the explanations make sense. I guess I'll have to shift gear a little bit, because I spent the last twelve eighteen months. Uh talking to people about how the parcel tax operated in Union Bay, and it was for capital only, but I guess. Um that's that's going to change a bit, and and I think it's good comfort to tell people that there'll be um comprehensive. Review in addition to um those big pieces around water master plan. And asset management. And future developments, assuming we figure out sewage. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any other lights on. So on receipt, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. We have a recommendation. Moved and seconded that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six financial plan for the Union Ray Water Local Service Area Function three oh eight. Be approved. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Next item up is the Royston Water Local Service Area Function three twelve for receipt. Moved and seconded and back to Chris, I think. Yep.
Great, thanks to the chair. So yeah, again, I've prepared a brief presentation to walk us through the recommended plan for the Royston Water Local Service Area. So again, starting off with a brief overview of the service, so it's been a regional service since since it was converted from the old Royston. Improvement District in twenty ten, provides water to uh just over nine hundred connections in area A. The water is supplied from the Village of Cumberland under a water supply agreement. Um and uh revenue for the service, similar to the last one, is a combination of parcel tax and user rates. It's operated as part of our kind of aggregated operations by our water crew led by Mike Kirshmiller. And Mike and his team in twenty-one had a busy year for the service. It was the first uh year of a five-year program to replace the water meters with um with a type of cellular meter. Um that will be uh the higher reliability and and will allow near instantaneous uh identification of leaks. And provide some additional tools that are accessible to to residents. Um in addition to resolving some significant safety issues in terms of the meter reads that along the highway. It's uh between two and three hundred of the connections are our service directly off of the highway. Second one there is um, we did continue work on the alternate water supply planning for the for the service. Just given that the Village of Cumberland does intention does is for us to to come off of that system. Um we progressed the design for the Minto Fire Road uh Minto Road Fireflow improvements. We continued um with part of the more general water system, uh continued roll out of the city works computerized maintenance management system. Um we developed a um and and delivered a complete uh system flush. To um maintain the water quality in the system. We replumbed the Heron Dale reservoir to address some historic. Constraints on that system, and then finally, we cleaned the Royston reservoir. So the photo at the bottom left, there. Is a is taken inside the freshly cleaned Royston reservoir. Looking ahead to the coming year, we plan to work with the Village of Cumberland to extend the water supply agreement, so the the um. The water supply agreement, I think twenty-two is the last of the three years, um and the agreement has kind of options for two one-year renewals. So I think we're probably be looking to to roll it over for 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 an additional year and and probably make use of that that final year as well. Which would then bring us to when the expect expected completion date of the um. Regional extension, which I'll touch on on a separate slide. Uh so yes, continued meter replacements, the second of five-year complete to the rollout of the city works C M M S. Um complete the Minto Road Fireflow improvements, um progress the water south extension project. And then as part of that, actually shifting the water infrastructure that's currently on the Livingston property on the corner of Livingston and Royston Road. Um that was actually the original Royston um. Improvement District or Water Works um site. So they cited some of the valving and and a P R V on that property. We planned to move it into the road right away as part of that uh shift to regional water. So yeah, summary table, just comparing kind of the key differences from last year to to this, uh starting with revenue, slight uh. Slight decrease in revenue anticipated, um but negligible um wars. So the water supply agreement uh that's currently in place holds the bulk water rate at eighty one cents a cubic meter. Uh so expect that through to the end of twenty-two. We did have a a interim rate increase last year, just as part of that asset management work, uh until the comprehensive rate reviews completed this year. This year, we did, we're just calling for a two percent increase in. Um rates, just to keep up with inflation in line with the other water local service areas. Personnel costs are um stopped very, very tiny bit, point nine percent. Um slight change in our allocation of of operators between services has almost offset the regular increase due to Q P. Um and just a reminder that for these services, only the time spent by the operators is actually built. We we do a projection based on past years at the beginning of the year. But then um time is billed to the services based on time sheets. Operating costs are actually down uh nine point three percent this year. Um largely due to the bulk of that landslide mediation work, um that was, the budget was amended for last year, has been complete. Um and then finally, the reserve contributions of for the services average about seventy-five thousand. Uh over each of the five years of this recommended plan. So for the alternate water source project, so this is just a graphic pulled out of the one of the planning documents that's currently underway, so. So this project is is, the planning is is proceeding, um we're, what we have ahead of us this year is is continuing to support. The City of Courtney and the K F N's decision-making process. The K F N community decision on their treaty process specifically is expected early in twenty twenty-three, and that's. It's a, obviously, a key milestone for the project, the K F N are the primary driver for this particular um. Iteration of the concept of extending water services, so. We, so pending on that 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 approval, um. The also planning a consultation and potentially an ascent process if required early in twenty twenty-three. Uh which point we'd be free to initiate the design early next year. Um we did achieve a uh extension on the grant funding for this project. Um so just a reminder that the. Water South Extension Project was packaged with the water treatment project and and attracted about seven and a half million dollars in. In grant funding, which is still still earmarked for the project. So that deadline is now March of twenty twenty-six. Uh at last year's financial process, the E A S C allocated half a million dollars of community works funds to help. Mitigate the capital expense to the to the Royston Water Local Service Area participants. And so that the capital size is estimated at two and a half million. Um we're reviewing options for funding and payment of the other portion of the cost to Royston, which is the capital improvement cost charges payable to the. Comox Valley Water System. So those aren't embedded in this plan, as we're still assessing whether, you know, those those will be covered through. You know, uh there's options, the options include um a request to the Water, most value water committee for. Uh pay a repayment of of those C I C Cs over over time, so there are precedents for that, so that would be one option. Or another one would be amortizing it in a similar way to the rest of the capital cost for this project. Um so. By the time we get to the the next financial plan, we'll have a a solid plan worked out for that. By the time we get to the the next financial plan, we'll have a solid plan worked out for that. And yeah, so it's finally. In summary, for this this service. So we did implement an interim rate increase last year. That's carried us through to this year, only only thing on the books for this year is a two percent increase, just to keep up with the effects of inflation. And we'll also do undertake a review of operator allocations, just to avoid kind of those. Those adjustments in the future, from a climate crisis and environmental perspective, and the service is fully needed. And we have a conservation rate structure in place to help minimize water consumption. The community partnerships, the water south extension project is a great, great example of of intergovernmental. Collaboration, definitely continuing to explore that partnership with the City of Courtney and the Comox First Nation to help reduce the impact of. Of this project on the service participants. And in a manner, did it just relations perspective, we'll continue to work with the K F N Chief and Council on that project and and any others of significance. And are committed to full compliance with the K F N's cultural heritage policy for this project. That's all I have today, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chris, I see a question from Dr. Gray.
Thanks, Madam Chair, as you say, I would staff. So we're looking at two thousand and twenty six best case scenario. You mentioned grant funding, and you alluded to the fact that it's tied in with the sanitary sewer. It's not tied in, so it's it's independent of all that.
Yeah, so that so that that grant funding was actually received through the Comox Valley Water Treatment Project, so it's. So it was originally on that grant timeline, we've had a couple extensions, so the latest one. Makes completion by March of two thousand and twenty six, we 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 expect to complete it earlier than that, but that would be the absolute latest, just under the. Under the program requirements.
That's good, I know that the entire time I've been elected, we've been talking about. This issue of changing Royston into the Comox Valley system, and. As I said earlier on the meeting, everything moves at this incredibly glacial pace, but at least we're getting there. The other question is around infrastructure itself. Is the infrastructure in the Royston system up to a standard? That we can actually hook them up to the to the Comox Valley system?
Do you mean from a like a pressure perspective, or?
Just, yeah, just, yeah, just the infrastructure itself, because I know that. Generally speaking, whenever we do something new, there's always a bunch of upgrades that need to be done, so is that going to be over and above the grant funding?
Well, certainly, we're we're. We're doing a lot of planning, you know, within, so that, I mean, the water south extension project is, we're wearing a couple hats on delivery of that project. The overall coordination, but also just purely from from Royston's perspective, so. We've got a pretty good handle on on the improvements within Royston that are required to 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 receive regional water. And I think it's it's definitely very viable, you know, we 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 definitely have some. Some neighborhoods, particularly along Marine Drive, where where the the water lines are are aging. But not not really much different from from our other water service areas, where we have that, you know, fifty plus year old asbestos cement pipe. But I think we'll be, you know, using strategically, using pressure reducing valves and pressure zones to ensure that. We don't see any. Any steep increases in pressure.
And I noticed the the line comes down Livingston Road. And and then you're going to put a pump station and pump it back up Royston Cumberland Road. So I guess there's no other way of avoiding that, because you're breaking head pressure, right? Then you're going to have to build it back up.
Yeah, so we so that it'll be more of a booster station, so the the. Clearwell pressure from the new newly constructed plant, we would actually get it most of the way up the road, but the pump station will just ensure that it gets up to the top of the. The water line in the reservoir. Yeah.
Okay, good engineering, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Gray, I'm sorry, Dr.
Yeah, thanks. I don't have questions on the budget, it looks pretty good. I guess the piece that's missing that we started a year ago that I still haven't seen. Is the overall picture, right, for infrastructure in the south. Because when I hear that we might go to referendum, and I don't know if it's referendum or A P or whatnot, it said referendum on your list. In early two thousand and twenty three. You know, we might head to referendum on the ballot around sewage with Royston. I was really hoping, and I noted it two years ago, that we we'd come for both Union Bay residents and Royston residents around a comprehensive picture of the future. Around the different kind of. I guess tax demands and service demands that they're going to face, so in the case of Royston. You're talking about this project, and there's also the sewage one, in case of Union Bay, there's. The water master plan. There's a sewage, and there's the need for a new fire hall. So what I'm seeing right now is we still don't have that piece that I guess. Our our past CFO had started on last summer, which was kind of laying out. Okay, here's where you're sitting at, that taxes and service right now, and. Here's what it might look like in five or ten years from now, if we realize all those projects, so we're kind of more going piecemeal in terms of. In my opinion, in terms of how we're approaching this. I don't know what happened to that work or that report, it seems to have vanished the last few months from sight. But but this said, taken individually, I guess, that's fine, that's what most organizations do. This one seems seems good, seems like a good plan. You haven't commented on the tax impact potentially of this project, so you've commented generally about the grants that we have and. Five hundred K allocation we did. But in my mind, those are all relevant, if if we're going to go door to door and and talk to residents about sewage, you know. I don't want to surprise them. Or surprise, or or them get surprised, not just me, like whomever, two months later, if they find out that. This project might add another five hundred, a thousand dollar to their taxes. Right now, I don't know that information, maybe we'll know more in the last few months, maybe it's just that fifty bucks. That this project will cost, but I think if we're planning to engage Royston residents around sewage. And the cost of that, we should also be prepared to speak about. What the water needs may look like in year two as well, and what the tax impact of that is. So that's my comment.
Sure, I can, I can try to respond, and thanks for those comments, and certainly the. Your reference to the various projects and services in in the in the south and Royston, you can pay aren't aren't lost, and we're. We're very much aware of these. Competing demands and interests and and something that is front of mind as we consider our overall financial plan. That comprehensive picture that you've mentioned, we haven't, we haven't been able to put that together just as of yet, because these these other projects do. Do come with their timelines, and so we're having to to balance these competing varieties, that said. Yeah, as as we go forward to public engagement, we we do understand the importance of having a full picture. And and we will, we will do our best to put those pieces together, so that there's. So there's awareness on on sequencing and timing of of various capital priorities.
And and we maybe we need to push back on some of those other projects as well, like sewage, because. Our timelines keep moving, I think Dr. Greve often refers to that, like when we started on the water master plan. For Union Bay, for example, that work was going to be presented and completed in January, so. Now I'm hearing that's not the case, and we're like, you know, we're pushing. Further into into the future, so I understand there's project delays, but. At the same time, when you try to roadmap something, if you have multiple delays across the board, then. It it just makes it. Makes it for a more difficult story to residents. Especially when you tell them we anticipate this, or we anticipate that, and it doesn't come on time, then that changes the community conversation, and now you're on your back foot. Right, so. Nothing I can do about it, I'm just mentioning it, so that I'm glad that you see that that broader picture of. Presenting the long term to residents is not lost. But especially as we head towards potentially really important decision in the fall around sewage. If the picture is really unclear on the number of level, that will lower confidence of both residents and myself around presenting the case.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other comments. On receipt, then, all in favor. Opposed, that's Carrie, your recommendation. Moved in seconded that the proposed financial plan for the Royston Water Local Service Area Function three one twelve be approved, all in favor. Opposed, and that's carried unanimously. I don't have see any new business and no in camera, some like to move termination. Moved in seconded, any opposed? And that's carried, thanks, everyone.